Who's not here?
No, he is not here. I'm meeting with, um, Mayor Hill.
Alright.
You can put one of them up there swift. Put one slightly up.
Yeah, about him four more.
That's fine.
No, it is. You can't please us anytime. I've not worn that water now than I ever did in my.
Yeah, you watch that thing?
I, I, I really didn't want to know that much.
Didn't want to stand here, didn't want to stand here for this?
I understood, it doesn't mean that I remember it. Unfortunately, you can't. Ah, look, I did that. For some reason. Well, watching, you know, I've lived in Ocean County all my time, also watching Ocean County, basically payable. Been listening to it for almost fifty years.
How you doing?
Good.
How are you? What's it?
What? Is it over?
It's over.
Five crackers. Right?
Was I here? Was you here?
Yeah. But yeah, emotional fatal, yeah.
That's important.
We improved every other one.
All the now.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think. So, I know this is Spring Lake's funny story. Mayor wanted to pay, hold back guys. And so they said no. So he goes and goes to the league and go the hand you hasn't paid. And then the customer then swat the down. Why? And he says, in Spring Lake, you know, every house. So every single neighbor watches this whole place. Monday morning, they get ten long calls. I couldn't figure out what the, the whole thing was. I, I used to dress my neighbors as some plastic flowers.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, so it has, uh. Yeah, so I think it's like some sort of way, anything like that. Something like. The guys. There was something. How? What I'm doing is here. Hello? Once we get caught around. Yeah, go to the right. No, but I'm calling.
You go look at the fireworks.
We even watch it now. It's a painting of a lot.
Yeah, same.
It takes you an hour to get it. Then once it's done, it takes you an hour to get it.
Yeah, I got grabbed when I was a kid, you know, like, and I used to think. I was never that, it never did anything for me, so I was never, uh, we only had one child. Grandparent, you thought she, she looked at me like, well, why are you coming here?
Son.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And most of them now, they don't start the evening. They're usually ten o'clock.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I went to school in Kansas. But I didn't go to Kansas, but I went to, I remember going to a Kansas football game. Way up there. It took an hour to get down to the parking lot. It took another hour to get out of the parking lot. And sitting way up there, they looked like peanuts anyway. And I thought, I don't think I'll do this again.
We, we need, uh, six or seven.
Okay.
And I've done it in the past, probably, I've probably been at it for five minutes. And when it stops, if I'm there, I have to say that everyone leaves a sign. And then, and then you got, you know, parking lot across the bridge. And it's like, by the time, what a bunch of hundred, you're a hundred hundred, you gotta be able to order. I got home, you know, and everything.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Best one was, went to a net game, just, but this one up, about three, about fifteen years. And we got the next to the last row. Of course, down below was empty, but they were all sponsors. Yeah, and it was all sponsorship, so it was, it was, we were, guys, we were, but after a while, we, we turned to them and said, look, we'd like to switch seats. We'll buy you the beer. And they looked at us and, oh, no, we're gonna tell our friends we have a good seat. We're not gonna give it up to you guys. I said, alright, two beers, nah, you can't buy us anything. That was so funny. That was a trick, that was so funny, and we were, I was blessed.
Here's a chair. Almost can happen tonight. But then the cross has it. There you go, so Morty Gross, you got, you got the job, you got, you got the job.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to quote tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised according to New Jersey Sun-Channel Law. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gilly. Mr. Halverson.
Here.
Mr. Langley.
Here.
Mr. Natale.
Here.
Mr. Riviat.
Mr. Inger.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez. And Mr. Halverson.
Here. Um, we have Mr. Gilly and Mr. Obi. And Judy Riviat absent, so I'll be seating, uh, Muchingberg and Morty Gross instead of them. I'd like to ask them to these rights and sweep the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approval of minutes of June eighth, uh, June eleventh?
Motion.
Motion for Morty Gross, second.
Second.
Second, Muchingberg, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Uh, Halverson.
Yes, okay. Um, for the record, um, Judy Riviat is here tonight, so we have a full board of seven members. Um, Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence in tonight's meeting?
No, but there are two items on the agenda, appeal number four zero seven one, Alexander Hoffman, they didn't submit his wife's plans in time, so they cannot be heard tonight.
Okay.
Want to carry that?
Uh, is anyone here for, um, four zero seven one, Alexander Hoffman?
We'd like to be on your meeting.
That's August twenty ninth.
Twenty seven.
Twenty, twenty what?
Twenty seven or twenty nine?
Whatever that Monday is, okay? Twenty nine. August twenty ninth.
Twenty seven.
Twenty nine, I believe it is.
I would know this place.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven?
Twenty seven.
Hold on, I have a break in front of me. Twenty seven, yes, August twenty seven. August twenty seven, okay, you got it, eight twenty seven.
Chairman, take note and authorize movement of the public notice.
Correct. Um, Madam Secretary, um, that, this, did it submit the paperwork that we requested last month?
They just submitted this last.
Oh, so we have, so there's no.
We do have.
Okay, good, perfect, okay. So can I have a motion to, uh, postpone Alexander Hoffman's meeting? Uh, can see the drive to eight twenty seven, you submitted it late, correct?
Yes.
Okay, for the reason being that you submitted late, we'd ask for the notice of waiver of time. Motion, who was that? Much, much, Muchingberg, second.
Second.
Much, Much Langley, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Riviat.
Yes.
Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes, if anyone that's here for appeal number four zero seven one, Alexander Hoffman, that will be heard on eight twenty seven, August twenty seventh. Um, I see we have another one that's being, that's being pushed over tonight?
Forty seventy eight, Madison second. Don't think they noticed, or they didn't notice properly.
All right, so this is not matter of parent individual, just submit directly and get necessary notice.
Right.
Okay, so there's no motion needed for it. Okay, so if anyone that's here for four zero seven eight, Madison second LLC, that will not be heard tonight, it'll be heard on eight twenty seven, pretending that they noticed it properly, uh, before August twenty seventh meeting. Um, anything else, Madam Secretary?
Uh, no.
Okay, fine. Now, before we go into, into, um, uh, tonight's agenda, I just want to make an announcement to my fellow board members. Um, we have here a mandatory class that we have to take, um, under the Ralph Act, which is the Religious Recuperação Act. Uh, after the meeting, I would like to ask you, please stay, we're going to the back room, and our esteemed attorney, Jerry Dancy, will discuss it with us. And everyone will get a chance to review the documents and the paperwork and understand really what's going on, so that detention does not fall under any litigation under the Ralph Act, like we've seen in Maui and in many other states around the country. So please, everyone, please do not disappear right after the meeting, thank you. Um, Madam Secretary, we're gonna go into tonight's meeting now. Um, of forty seventy six, motion fit.
Rev, rev, new block seven eighty-two, lots thirty-six point oh one to thirty-six point oh nine, HG seven zone, subdivide existing nine lots into nineteen lots, on Terry vote engineer plan, June thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Board previously approved the major subdivision under appeal number three nine eight seven, which would memorialize on October thirty first, twenty sixteen. The existing, number thirty-nine eight seven approval, allowed for the construction of nine single-family lots and one small open space lot. The advocate now proposes to subdivide lots thirty-six point oh one through thirty-six point oh nine, blocks seven eighty-two into nineteen lots. Eight duplexes, sixteen units, and one three-unit townhouse are supposed to be constructed on the lots.
Mr. Chairman, as the advocate, as the advocate. Uh, as Fred indicated, uh, there are existing nine single-family lots, and now looking, uh, to modify the application, to modify the previous approval. Uh, the original idea, again, duplexes and gananas are additional, um, are additionally approved in the zone. Uh, these, the original plan was, uh, smoke of a friend who wanted to live all together, single-family lots in the area. Um, they decided it didn't really work in this area, um, for them, and they're now coming back to, to get some duplexes and one duplex approved.
You could continue this application since it's of limited use and everything is, is admitted in there. Jerry, does this belong to the planning board? Yeah, no, sorry.
It's not a use farage, but it was an application that was originally, uh, adopted by the zoning board, because they were here because they wanted single families. Since the zoning board took jurisdiction, uh, when we submitted this application, we were instructed to, uh, bring it to the zoning board who took jurisdiction originally.
But, however, however, um, since, since everything is committed on it, duplexes are permitted in the zone, um, let me just go back to the zoning board, you all can all keep that for single families part of that.
I do also want to point out that some of the parts of the original application are safe, uh, for example, the, uh, the. The application, the part of the conditions where sole owner management, all those parts of the application are made the same.
Well, should be the one. When, when we first, uh, the, the neighbors, the property owners first came back, uh, they came, uh, and they split it to, uh, the planning board, uh, and I believe you were copied on the emails where they said, we were approved for singles, now we want to do duplexes. We want to do duplexes, and we want to divide them into two lots. Uh, administrative miners, the planning board said, you can't do that, because you're gonna re-subdivide property that was subdivided by the zoning board, since you're gonna be re-subdividing property subdivided by the zoning board, you need to go to the zoning.
There was a map filed with the county?
There was a map filed with the county, the lots have been created, there's one lot that remains. Uh, the roadway is all what was done at the county, so it's an application that was within the, uh.
You what?
You came to.
Your jurisdiction, okay, fine. I just, there's, there's, I'll give you a second. But there's one other issue which finally just was to the mayor, there's, there's a triplex over here that also probably is not a permitted use in that area, which probably, for example, uh.
Townhouse is permitted.
What?
Townhouse is permitted.
Townhouse is permitted. Okay, so this is permitted, okay, so I think that's.
Single-family houses are not permitted.
Correct, 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 correct. We'll get to that again. Now, what do you need, five more?
I'm gonna ask a question.
Grab it there.
Probably, or.
We'll add something, whatever you think you should do.
Did I ask, am I allowed to ask you something privately, Jerry?
Are you having a legal question?
Am I allowed to ask you something privately?
A legal question? Private.
That's it, yeah.
Who's the owner of this property now? Who's the owner of the property?
Well, there's, there's, there's several owners, uh, but there's one applicant, and the, the owner affidavit has been submitted. But there's one applicant, motion fit, yeah.
We don't want to use it.
Okay, okay, fine, yeah. Uh, so for the record, Much Langley's just qualifying himself, um, includes himself, um, application, um, what numbers is it again? Um, four zero seven six, Much options, so we'll be going forward with six numbers, okay?
Like, uh, times for Brian Flannery?
Yes, please do, now, now, now we got the, the other way over.
I give Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional and the dear professional planner. Uh, I marked four exhibits. Uh, A one, uh, is a good highlighting in pink, the, uh, lot lines that are proposed, and in orange, the, uh, duplexes and the three-unit townhouse, uh, that are proposed. Uh, A two is the map that was filed originally, uh, and, uh, and is now those lots that have been created, and I've indicated in red the, uh, four places where the lot lines changed, uh, slightly. Uh, A three is the tax map, uh, showing this property, and, and the tax map has been updated to reflect, uh, the A, A two map that was filed. Uh, and A four is just a, uh, plan of the layout. Uh, and A4 is just a, uh, plan of the layout, uh, with a little more detail on it. Uh, looking at Terry's report, um, he goes through the project description, and Adam already indicated that when this came in, uh, it was a bunch of, uh, individuals that were gonna be living in these lots, wanted single-family lots, and I'm gonna be in the neighborhood. If that hadn't occurred, the whole thing would have gone to the land board, and you guys, uh, would have to, uh, be sitting through the application. Uh, now, uh, that, uh, if they want to build duplexes and townhouses, which are permitted in the zone, uh, we have some relief that's required, um, and, uh, it starts on, uh, page three. Terry lists the zoning variances, uh, item one, where he indicates that they are conditionally permitted in the zone. Uh, item two, he indicates that a variance required for minimum lot area for the duplex, uh, for the triplex. And, and, and I would have to disagree with him on that because the ordinance says a tract area of one acre. With the tract, and, and you can look at the definition of, of tract in the ordinance, that's an area parcel site piece of land or property, which is the subject of a development application, so the tract is this whole ninety-four thousand square feet. So the tract does comply with the one acre, so I, I don't make a habit of disagreeing with Terry because he's usually right, uh, but in this particular case, uh, it's my professional opinion, we don't need that variance.
Let's, let's, let's get that out of the way, okay? Terry?
Okay.
Jerry? Do you, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And, and that's gonna lead us into item two on, uh, minimum lot, uh, item three, a variance for minimum lot width. Again, the minimum lot width is for the tract, and our tract has a lot width of over three hundred feet. So, uh, this particular lot for the, uh, triplex doesn't have, uh, a lot width that complies, but it doesn't need to. If we came in here, uh, we could come in here for duplexes and triplexes without any lot lines and get all this approved, these lot lines are, are merely something permitted by the ordinance so that everything's on a piece of a lot. So, my, my opinion on that would also be that we don't need that relief.
That's, that's on item?
Item three.
Go back to item, um, Terry, are you in agreement with this too?
Yes.
Okay.
Item four, the applicant, uh, I, I was told that they submitted new architectural plans for the three-unit townhouse, uh, to make it smaller, so that we would comply with the twelve feet, uh, so that we no longer are requesting or requiring, uh, the, the variance for the side yard setback in item four.
So you're leaving it at, at what?
We're gonna comply with twelve feet.
With twelve feet?
We're making various questions. Yes, variance we're requesting. That, we're gonna comply with twelve feet on each side.
Okay.
Uh, brings us to number five, which is relief that, that we do need, it's a corner lot. Uh, you see, uh, on A1, it's this duplex lot that's in the corner of the cul-de-sac, uh, we were being a corner, uh, and a couple places comes, comes close, uh, and, and I will provide testimony.
Say it again?
We, we're asking for fifteen here and fifteen there.
Fifteen where?
Fifteen to, uh, Sheraton Drive near the cul-de-sac on the corner, and also, uh, on the side of the, the duplex unit.
Excuse me?
We're fifteen, it was a corner, it was twenty-five.
But it's only the corner?
Just the corner. But it's a corner, it's a front corner and a side.
And that whole side?
And that whole side.
I don't see, I don't see that.
And I, I'll give you the, I'll give you the testimony justifying.
Front corner, what, what do you promise?
It, it, yeah, it, it's...
Yeah, so...
It, it has front, it has front end on two sides, but it's...
Correct, so over here, you need to be twenty-five, and you're only putting down fifteen.
Correct.
And here, also twenty-five, but only the corner is in the fifteen, because as the cul-de-sac curves up, you're gaining the, the, the required, uh, twenty-five feet.
Yes, yes, we have.
So how far in is this fifteen-foot, uh, variance? Uh, inch, two inches, a foot, two feet?
It's probably half of, of the one unit.
Half of the one unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's, it's my opinion, that's the only relief we need, and, and when we get finished with the other items, I, I will address why I think that makes sense and why I feel the board...
I, I know, but...
Oh, so the board's ready for approval without me explaining? So, um, uh, item six is a, lists a, uh, variance for minimum floor area, and in the HD seven zone, if you're building commercial, there is a minimum floor area. I've never seen a minimum floor area, uh, required for townhouses and duplexes, and again, I, I would respectfully say, uh, I, I don't feel that...
And which, which, which line is this?
All of them.
All of them. That, are we referring to my team of, uh, engineer? Are you in agreement?
You ever seen an engineer on the turn, the applicants engineer, and they, uh, you would question that? So you had an issue with the senior, this, um, the, the applicant...
They're not supposed to be either of you guys.
The applicant's engineer's question of variance is the applicant's planner and engineer that's testifying is saying that we don't need it. The ordinance does have the HD seven, uh, and, and it's, and when it relates to a lot that you're gonna develop, build for highway development, a commercial or retail or something, it has a minimum, because they, they don't want a little building.
So procedurally, you're withdrawing from the hiring process?
Yes.
And, is he correct?
I'm gonna let him go with this case.
Uh, then, yeah, yes, right off.
And, and, and that would relate to, uh, item seven as well, uh, because that's a, uh, with respect to driveways. And again, the, the esteemed engineer that submitted the application, that asked for that, in my opinion, it should be, because these applications are in accordance with the conditional use standards, eighteen dash ten ten, eighteen dash ten fourteen, and none of them have these requirements, and none of them have, uh, no, no application before this board or the planning board has ever limited driveways to this duplex, or required twenty-five square foot, uh, given. Uh, item, item eight is a design waiver for providing a two-foot stagger between the proposed townhouse unit, and, uh, if the, the board feels that's inappropriate, we will certainly stagger the townhouse unit so that two feet is not required, so, uh...
By doing so, are we gonna create any other variances?
No.
Okay, even the ones that we discussed over there?
Correct, correct.
You might, you might...
The front unit is below.
You, you might, you might require a rear yard setback then, for the...
No, the front, the...
No, no, for, for...
Then it would pull up two feet.
No, no, I'm not talking about that one, I'm talking about the, what did you have the side yard issue? The one, right there, if you do a, a stagger, we...
Only require a townhouse.
Oh, got it, got it, I thought you meant that you stagger the...
Yeah. So, just to put in perspective, so the board understands, it sounds like a lot, we're going from nine to nineteen. It sounds like the lines got their shoe worn out, and we really pushed them in. Uh, but it, it's not the case, the original application had nine single-family lots with an average lot area of ten thousand five hundred thirty-seven, where you know in the HD seven, you can build eighty-five hundred square foot. Uh, so they were nine nice, uh, uh, single-family lots, and that's why the board acted favorably, and, and I can read it from the minutes where I came in and...
I remember, I remember this petition very, very well.
Yes, and, and, and my testimony was, by right, we could build duplexes, we're asking for single families, and, and I think that was the end of the application. When that... Well...
Wait, 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 can I tell you what, what my testimony, um, then was? My recollection, actually, whatever, I had that. Um, we gave you the single-family lots at that time because we gave you the variance on Sheraton Court, and we figured that by giving you the single-family lots in there, and by giving you the duplexes on, 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 on Sheraton Drive or Port, whatever it is, it'll, it won't impact traffic that much down out of the Oak Street. What you're doing now is, we gave the variance on Sheraton, and now you're coming and you, um, hitting us with another, um, subdivision, perhaps if we would have known then, that you want to put a duplex back in that corner, maybe we wouldn't have thought about giving you the duplexes on Sheraton coming out of Oak Street.
Well, first of all, we got the duplexes on Sheraton, and you can see them on, uh, A3.
Mm-hmm.
That application was first, so those, those duplexes were already granted.
I understand that.
And, and, and I, I think what the sheriff is remembering, and, and my recollection isn't always that, that close, so, that's why I pulled the minutes out from that meeting, and, and what happened is, we came in initially and we asked for variances, and the board...
On which one?
On the, the beginning part of Sheraton.
Yeah, the beginning part, correct.
Uh, we asked for variances, and I wasn't, uh, very convincing in my testimony, and we had to go back and redraw the plan.
Correct.
We went back and redrawed the plan without relief. So the, the duplexes, uh, are conform. Uh, we had, but the smallest was eighty-four hundred thirty-seven square feet, and the largest was nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven square feet, so they were virtually conforming. We were here because we were, uh, fifty square feet.
I'm not agreeing, but we like, we like the fact that you put in nine singles in there because the traffic coming out of the Oak, how do we know now?
Well, we, we had...
Let me, let me, you're gonna be adding now nineteen times four cars, plus, and the bus can be as many as two more five-block per unit, okay? We're gonna add that much cars coming out of the Oak Street. Oak Street is a disaster, as it is, right in the beginning of going out and coming out from all those schools, okay? So, you know, we gotta think that through. We like the fact that we want to put in nine single lots there because, hey, some other guy can come in and put in duplexes in there, and then we're gonna be...
And, 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 and that's correct, we liked it, but we have an ordinance that says virtually by right. The only, the only thing we're asking for is not to have this go up the corner and make it smaller. So with the same number of strict, the same number of people, a by-right application.
I, I understand.
And, and on, on by-right applications, uh, the traffic to the township and the, the planners in their wisdom have taken into account that this property can be developed, and, and we're showing nineteen units. You could really, if you came in and just did townhouses, you could do twenty-two or twenty-three units, so you would have more units coming out here, and, and you keep referring to when you gave them a stack, you'd like us to do the singles. You didn't know we were doing the singles, but that was already, uh, approved and filed, and, and some lots were sold. These, these people that came in, and, and now they're...
That's what we ate, the thing, look exactly at that, because it's a better, it was way better than squeezing in another, another townhouse.
Yes.
Or, or another home.
And, and it, and it, and it's, and it's way better from a traffic impact.
On a side note, I remember when that came in, you, you, we pushed that application ahead of the law before, the guys had to close now, tomorrow. We had a primary essence, we need to close now, we don't have time, if you remember that, that was two years ago, still not closed, still not yet.
And, and this board is very accommodating to people, and, and...
We need to do it, we got like old seven guys, old line guys, have the money together, we gotta close it, everyone's gonna buy each piece separately, and everyone's gonna go, ooh, are we gonna go ahead and go to the closing? Oh, we need to do it now, because that guy's money's coming, and that guy's money's not gonna come, and you should lose it, but, 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 you know?
And unfortunately, in life, things change, when you have, when you have seven guys or nine guys, and they have nine wives and, and children, sometimes the family, for reasons that I can't explain, I, I can't explain my own family reasons sometimes, but sometimes there's reasons why you have to change, so now these people are going back and saying, "We're not trying to put more units in here that's allowed by the ordinance, we want to come in and put the amount of units that are allowed by the ordinance."
Okay.
Brock, this is an honest, a polite order to begin, and I come to the zoning board, and they want a full townhouse. Brock, do you agree, how many, how many units we put into this?
I, I had looked at that, I think it was twenty-two units.
This email, that's about, okay?
Well, it is.
I know you put a twenty-seven, ninety-nine on this, but right now, right now, you're in front of us.
No, those are in front of you, I was like...
Now you're here with this, forget about what, but I know, I know, I know the map, I know the numbers.
Yeah, but... But, what, what this board does is what's spelled out in the ordinance and in the municipal land use law. Uh, and, and people that own property, they have rights, and, and they have rights to develop it in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, now, when they come in and ask for relief, like to put single families in instead of duplexes, the board has to say, "Yes, that makes sense." And you did, you said, "Yes, that makes sense." Now they're coming in and saying, "We want to put duplexes, and it's permitted by the ordinance," that the board has to look within the constraints of the municipal land use law and the, and the Lakewood UDO. Uh, so what we're down to is the relief that we're requesting...
On that one?
One unit.
I know, I mean, that's one of those.
Okay.
I want, I have one more argument to do, okay?
Discussion.
What?
Discussion, right, there's no reason to argue.
Yeah, yeah, no arguing. Um, let's talk about the driveway for those three duplexes, that's a good word, the triplex, the triplex.
Are we allowed to use that word again? I was told about a year ago, calling it a three-unit townhouse, they go, we don't want to hear that.
How many use them?
So I haven't used the T-word since, but it's easier. How, how's the driveway, the driveway show here? Uh...
Yeah, I saw that, it, it, you know, it's...
And how's it gonna work?
One driveway across these minutes, what are you doing over there?
Yes, cross season, cross season, and, and each of them has four designated markings they do, and, and there's a lot of rooms, it's very large.
Beautiful, beautiful, I don't know.
Nineteen thousand.
Can you imagine what a single-family house is? How difficult that'll be?
Terry, you just... Another question, another issue. Fine, if you guys spoke about the area question, and, and what is this around the area, duplexes, are there a lot of single families?
Let's have, yeah, let's have the witness finish discussing.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, I, I, I wanted to put in perspective the, the lots and, and how it, how the changes really aren't that much, uh, even though it sounds like going from nine, nine to nineteen, that's because we're doing zero lot line subdivisions of them. The lot thirty-six point oh one, uh, which was twenty thousand, uh, one hundred forty-four, uh, on, on A2, uh, it, it's the only one that's changed in transparency because this piece over here, that really wasn't usable for that lot, uh, was added to the adjoining lot, uh, in, in order to make the three-unit townhouse building, uh, work. So that's, that's now, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred seventeen. The lot next to it, uh, which has the three-unit townhouse, was ten thousand seven hundred thirty-three, it's now an eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty square foot lot. Uh, and, and in a zone where you can do a duplex on eighty-five hundred, that's, uh, double a, a duplex lot, so we're asking for three units on a lot area-wise that could handle four. Uh, and, and then we go thirty-six oh three, oh four, oh five, there was no change at all on the three-time event here, and as you see on that map over there, there were, uh, what I would characterize as the minimalist changes, where we had ninety-eight, sixty-four, going to ninety-seven, eighty-eight, seventy-eight, going to nine thousand ninety-two, ninety-four hundred, going to ninety-nine, and ninety-two. Uh, the, the end lot being the smallest one, going to eighty-five, twenty-four, which is twenty-four square feet larger than what's required in that zone for a duplex. So, area-wise, density-wise, um, we're, uh, we comply with the ordinance, and, and we're compatible with the surrounding uses. Uh, you can see, we, we already talked about Sheraton, where it's coming in as duplexes, to the, uh, to the west of that is another duplex development. We do have the large, uh, open space that's indicated on A3, which is the Spruce Street School. So the Spruce Street School is something that will stay open like that, which will tend to dilute the density, and as you go both ways and, and anywhere on Route Nine, i- it's a high-density, it's a highway development court. So, with respect to the justification for the, uh, variance relief requested, um, the recently adopted, uh, master plan, I know I have it in here, Chairman, when he was discussing, saying with me not arguing, got me out of, out of order.
You don't know my argument?
Uh, uh...
Yeah, it's through my mind.
See? Page, or page two, it was only last year, so I, you know, I, yes. At my occasion, it's harder to remember the short-term stuff, the long-term stuff is...
I know.
So, the, uh, page two, the background information goes through all the growth that Lake was experiencing, it concludes... It concludes on page three with the number of births, which in two thousand and fifteen was four thousand four hundred and sixty-four, it's a lot more than that now. And it concludes, it's therefore important that Lakewood plans residential developments to house its growing population, which is why Lakewood has this on HD seven, which permits the townhouses and duplex that are proposed. On the same master plan on page seven on the vision, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And it's my testimony that this does this with a self-storage facility, which is being replaced, redeveloped with something that makes sense consistent with the area and in compliance with the ordinance, virtually a by right application except for bulk relief variance for one of the duplexes. The municipal land use law NJAC forty-four and fifty-five D2, under the purpose of the act is to encourage redevelopment to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estates in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does this by providing the housing that the master plan says we should provide. C is to provide adequate light air and open space and these lots, as I pointed out, do provide sufficient light air and open space, they exceed the ordinance's requirements for size. E is promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. That will contribute to well-being of persons, neighbors, communities, regions and preservation of the environment. And all the honor given to two hundred feet of this are noticed, and I think when the public gets up to the talk, if we have time for them to all be heard, the board will hear how the neighborhood feels this project fits in as well. So we're looking at for the relief that we're asking on that one unit, we're asking for a C2 variance, where we need to show that it's a unique piece of property. And if you look at the configuration in that right way, it's an existing lot, it's certainly unique. It's, the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced, which I showed the positive and negative. We have to show that it's going to have no adverse impact on the public welfare and on the neighbors and clearly that, based on that configuration, there's no detrimental impact from there. And we have to show that the benefits outweigh the detriment. And in this case, the benefits are providing housing and in my opinion, there's virtually no benefits. And we have to show that this relief can be granted without any substantial detriment of public good and will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And it's compliant with the zone plan, so it's my testimony that complies as well. Continuing in Terry's report, he indicates some things that need to be fixed on the plan, which I'm sure the design engineer will handle. He asks about the parking, there are four parking spaces per unit. Item fifteen indicates that the bulk schedule should be revised, indicate thirty percent of previous coverage, but these are being constructed in accordance with section eighteen ten-ten and/or eighteen ten-fourteen, which each allow thirty-five percent coverage for townhouses or forty percent coverage for duplexes. So we would go with the thirty-five percent, which provides the adequate sized townhouses as indicated. Under the architectural, we are...
Just one question, Chairman, if I can go back to two more common lines, architectural footprints.
We will revise the plans to indicate the normal architectural plans if the town wants to see only one basement entrance. The front will be one-third upgraded irrigation system, plantings, all the good things that the zoning board does for the good of the town.
There's no issue with the next year, I can say.
Correct, correct.
Mrs. Pepper, I'm not sure what happened with the design wave. Do you still want the design wave with the staggering or do you withdraw that request?
The board, we're fine, pretty good, they require it.
If the board in their wisdom prefers us to stagger them, we will stagger them. For a three-unit building, on the longer buildings, certainly it makes sense. On a three-unit building on a large lot like that, it's my professional opinion, it's not needed, but we would defer to whatever the board wants.
Okay. Perry, I was up to you, I was up to the middle, finally I had the drivers on the work, let's pick that up.
Brian, do you defer to the balance of letters acceptable?
To balance the letters, we would satisfy the board's end.
Back to the driveway, how's this driveway going to work on the townhouse development where, how would the total width of it?
The driveway is configured to allow contact access to all three units and three sets of four parking spaces in the driveway.
I know, but do you feel that this driveway can work the way it's all configured inside the project and these bumping of each other, trying to come in and come out? I mean, how wide?
On paper, Chairman, yes.
What?
On paper, yes.
Okay, and in real life? I mean, that's my...
I'll find a way to realize.
That's my issue that I'm looking at over here, where it's all, it looks like it's all going to be bobbled up in there. And I don't see a way how they can make a decent front yard with these driveways and cars all coming out and in with the garden and everything else. I think it's going to be a total disaster. One second please, give me one second.
The plans show the driveway with the four spaces.
I see, I see, I see.
And it shows areas...
I understand that.
...and then...
I see it all.
Lakewood drivers are very resourceful.
What do you want to add to this topic?
Yeah, where are they putting their garbage cans on garbage pickup thing? They're going to put them out in the street and in the middle of the street because, just imagine, just look at it over there. Each one, assume each one of them has one recycling and one regular garbage can, okay? And assume again that they're two feet wide and then they're not going to be putting it in front of the property that belongs to the neighbor and they have maybe two feet of property that's not their driveway to put it on. How are they putting six cans out there? That's two.
Well, we have an area at forty-five feet that's in the right way where it's not allowing anybody to park.
You're talking about towards, so these guys, this guy over here on the top right corner is going to push this garbage can, it's going to keep on the side, all the way down over there, then all the way across and put it in front of this thing over here.
Are we talking about garbage cans for the triplex?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if you're familiar with where I lived on Drake Road, I used to roll my garbage can probably three hundred and fifty feet. I didn't find that...
And that's why you're so skinny, but...
This is, you roll it out to here and then it's another seventy-five feet.
My point is that they're not going to do it and then there's going to be a bunch of cans blocking the street over here. I live near these cul-de-sacs, I see already the ones that have enough space in between how big of a disaster it has to be. On-street, there's going to be zero on-street parking for sure on every Wednesday and possibly Thursdays. And then when it comes to the bulk pickup day, when people are going to be putting broken stuff out in the middle of everywhere, I just don't see how this is going to work. It's not a room because everybody's angled and coming in on an angle to this cul-de-sac. You really maximize the amount of garbage cans that are going to be in one particular area on the northeast corner of this.
Well, we would certainly request from the township that they designate it as no on-street parking because we provided four parking spaces for each unit. In the driveways, there's no reason to park on the street. And the cul-de-sacs, the cul-de-sacs on the streets in Lakewood do have an issue where the cul-de-sacs being the lot's wide now, the people put their garbage cans, they put them...
This is the unique because of the double curb. Most of the cul-de-sacs are straight up and you've got cul-de-sac in the back. As a matter of fact, you know, it's not so bad because you expand it out. Here you made this curve like that, so you exacerbated the problem on this side and then the southwest corner, you have the exact same problem with the driveways over there as well. And I mean, basically, everybody's going to be pushing out to this forty-five foot area that's on the side because there's no way to do it otherwise, the drivers, I just don't see how this is going to work. There's not a room to put everything.
But we have a lot of, you're indicating that we have two places where it's finished, but there's other places we have all along this side here where there's...
There's four parking spots on the side of there, on the side of there. Maybe they're going to have to push around the corner after to the old Sheridan drive. I don't see that.
And we could certainly provide notice to any prospective buyers of the arrangements with the garbage cans.
I think, I...
I don't know with that.
A couple of questions. I'm looking at the previous approval, it says that you had ninety-one units proposed to be constructed, the last lot will be an open space lot. We got rid of that, right? There's no more playing area and nothing.
This lot is here, this lot wasn't being done as open space to be dedicated, this was a lot being, it said right on the map, we added to the lot of eleven ten, which is the next property. That was the issue when we came in with Sheridan, it was a temporary cul-de-sac there and that lot wasn't allowed to be built on until the cul-de-sac was eliminated. This application added this piece that's staying in to that last lot, eleven ten, on Sheridan where the former temporary cul-de-sac was located.
And what happens if you square this way, move this lot line back down? Do, does that make a variance on that lot that's not shown?
No, that, these people don't own that, this is owned by somebody else.
So, got it.
So, got it.
Okay. Okay, by the way, back to, back... Anything else? Are you okay? Okay. Back to, back to what Mr. West had to say, I don't believe there will be any much space on the garbage cans here because there's going to be way more than four cars per unit in this area. So there are other cars that are going to need to park and they probably will not find parking.
My experience is where you provide four parking spaces per unit, it's okay. If you look at some of the old developments, Whispering Mines, they did one and a half parking spaces per unit and that's why they're out on the road. Then we went to two parking spaces, then we went to three, then we went to three and a half. Since we hit four, nobody's asked.
I know, but since we hit four, some of these units require really six and not four. We're not here to discuss why, but we'll leave that, we'll leave that on a side note as to why we require six. But all these extra spaces show that you can put the garbage cans, were probably occupied by a car. So I'm going to leave it at that. Mike Shager.
Brian, how you doing? Just a moment.
No, you have to talk in the mic.
The last unit of the triplex, the, I guess you can go, the parking lot where you come in, they're going to have to back out and it's not T. So what they're going to have to do is they're going to have to back their car all the way out to the street all the way down because there's no, there's no, what you call like a K turn, there's nowhere where they can go back.
We could certainly move the parking spaces over.
Right.
So that we make a...
But maybe, about our memory, I remember when, if maybe the chairman can help me remember this, I vaguely remember that when we approved Hilton and then the adjacent one, which is Sheridan, well Sheridan helped with the adjacent one, we were shown a map that was kind of looped them all together.
No, we're going to loop the exact way that it would be now, like this, it wasn't going to cut anything off of it.
It wasn't.
I knew it was going to come out as a nine.
Right, there was a discussion that it wasn't going to happen that way.
Something in my mind that I can't find any paperwork about.
We were told on the first subdivision, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong, that that rule is going to continue and it's going to spill off somewhere else, whether it was going to loop to Hilton or go out to the nine, something, it wasn't just going to dead end.
Well, Sheridan, as I testified, had a temporary cul-de-sac and they said it was going to come into the back and that's what this application is...
But you meant, there was talk about coming for an additional application at that point and then we thought, even while we were doing the first section of Sheridan, that all that traffic will have another way of exiting.
I remember vaguely like that too, but I think I used to sometimes want to do this with somebody.
Now, not only that, but I put in additional nineteen. Brian, to tell you my own feeling on this is that, you know, usually when somebody comes in, nineteen homes is on a much clearer span of growth. You know, I just did a quick calculation, it's going to be seventy-six cars basically in a cul-de-sac, you know. I understand that you have the lot coverage that you need and a lot of times, hey, we're wanting with the lot sizes, but this is a very unique lot and how it lays out and where everything is just kind of pulled together, so you know, it doesn't, you know, I don't, doesn't look like it's going to flow or work properly.
I can tell you something on this also. Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, the only reason we're here is we already established those nine lots, now you're coming with a, with something that is allowed, which are duplex within those nine lots. That means if you were to scratch the whole thing, then you would essentially go to the planning board.
Correct.
I think that would be a much better choice because at this point, the way you're looking at it practically speaking, it's a disaster. It's really a disaster.
First of all, the right of way has been dedicated, so we don't own the right of way anymore. So that road has to stay that way and the planning board doesn't want the application.
They don't really have a choice. If you start to slash and reorganize the lots and forget about our lots, the way you're presenting the lots is not functional. You're going to go into Oak with seventy-something cars.
But you don't go in with seventy cars at the same time, the...
Yes, you do.
Maybe more seventy, by the way, seventy-something plus.
The minimum.
The minimum.
As many as possible.
Buses won't go in, buses are not allowed to go in the cul-de-sac again. All the kids are going to have to wait out on Oak Street.
All the kids, I can tell you how far I walked when I was a kid, but all the kids should walk out of Oak Street, that's where they should pick up, that's where the bus should come.
All the kids waiting on the corner of Oak Street and seventy-six cars trying to get out and make that turn.
Buses, by the way, for the record, buses will not go into a cul-de-sac and turn around because if the buses, if the buses to back up, buses are not allowed to back up, a code, so they have to swing around this whole cul-de-sac, we have to come around. There's going to be cars all over the place, they will not be able to do it.
Someone's entered to the so narrow.
Especially with that triplex.
The cars are not going to pull into the driveway, if there was parking, it's just going to be easier.
That was my question before.
A lot of them I like that they're so narrow. I find that, what I'm seeing is that if there was no parking, it's going to be so congested that if people sign up and said no parking, one of those nine wires will be a sign.
Make another point over here, I mean, insinuating in the beginning of your application was, maybe it wasn't insinuating, maybe you pretty much said, said straight out, that you can come up with ways to make this even worse by right. And I understand that, but at the end of the day, you're coming in front of us and we have that station that you have in front of us. I understand that you could fit twenty-three units over here with all the townhouses that you can do and it can make it even worse, but at least that's not asking our name to be stamped for us. We're not the planning board, whoever made this, allowed this to happen, I think was a disaster. We have to deal with what we have in front of us. I don't see how this works.
Okay, I think that we got there, we got the message. Therefore, before I go to the public, I just want to say one more thing, we didn't even discuss the fifteen-foot, the real variance they're for, which is only one, which wasn't even discussed, which was the fifteen-foot side yard. For me, I think to fifty feet close to the curb, it's way too, way too close. That's something that you want to decide. For the record, I would like to open that application to the public, anyone from the public wants to be heard, on four zero seven six, Mike Spitz, please come up. Okay, it is seen done, so we will close it to the public.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing some of these comments that the board has, we understand that you feel we're squeezing it a little too much and we still have this one variance. At this time, we can table the application so we can take a look at it, see if we can redraw, go ahead, see if we can address some of these issues and come back to the board.
It's not appropriate after an hour to say you can't do it. You can go forward or go backward.
I could also withdraw. I consider and say to the board, no problem, we're going to make one, we can take one of the units out of the triplex and make it a duplex and I consider and say we can try and reduce the duplexes to get away from the fifteen-foot variance from fifteen to twenty-five. And then in my experience from the board, the board always says, that's great, and then we end up making maybe a little mistake of drawing the line or some test, we have to come back and clean it up. What I'm saying is we've heard an actual testimony from the board...
What I'm saying is we've heard an actual testimony from the board. We understand that there's some concerns. We'd like to address those concerns. I think to withdraw the application, start the whole process again, it doesn't gain anything. We're here already at this point, and I think we could very well make this application, something that the board actually likes. We heard very good comments from the board.
I heard what you said. I heard what Jerry said. And therefore, I will just ask my fellow board members if they want to redraw it, or if they want to table it, or if they want to vote for it. Guys, it could be your decision. One more second. Jerry has something.
Could we take the next application? I mean, Jerry, in the meantime, we talk to this guy. I mean, it's...
That is funny. I have to ask you that, and I have the option. I recommend, if we're gonna start making some changes, I just think it's always a better opportunity to have it drawn out and properly seen as the board's in control. I'm happy to go through the application, and it will be well...
On that note, going to the clients, I don't think the fellow board members are gonna like this fact that they're gonna come back and redraw it that heavy. Jerry, look at it closely and make sure that looks right. I think, knowing the board, they're gonna wanna see a full-blown set of plans. If we were to withdraw it or table it, or whatever, so therefore, I'm gonna recommend that. Let the board decide if they want to vote on it, or withdraw it, or table it. That would be my suggestion.
Again, we're trying to work with the board. We understand what the board's indicating. That's why we're asking if we can just table it.
What do you want to do?
I'd say we vote. I don't see anything that it could do.
Okay, vote. Mike? You're okay with voting? Pull it, table it, or withdraw it? It's two different numbers. I think Terry is right, that we shouldn't pull it at a table. If anything, let it, let it, I mean, Jerry.
There's so many changes that I think it makes no difference. It's exactly the same thing. You're gonna have to renotice. The way I'm looking at the application, taking one unit out, squeezing this, that, it's not gonna make it.
Okay, I think that if they should vote on this, I think that the changes that we're talking about are so dramatic, they can come back and just redo it. So, I don't have a problem if they just withdraw it, or come back at another time. I don't have a problem with that. It's really, I think, it's really up to you, Mr. Speaker.
Fine, I got it. I got it. Guys, you guys can have a motion. Or you got a motion, or whatever you want to do. Jerry, you okay with something?
At this point, we're no longer asking for the one variance or the one, two less. That's why, now basically, fully performing the application, no variance is... I can't, I can't just direct the board to the ramifications of voting on, or denying, fully performing the application. I think, I'm just letting the board understand, at this point, we're asking for no variance on this application.
Yes, but you're asking for subdivision, I guess subdivision rather than cyclone. The board certainly has discretion to determine whether or not, especially with the triplex. You can have 12 parking spaces on that property, and a very narrow, you drive them. So, I think it's within the board's discretion to decide if they want to, whether the driveway's gonna work.
Or...
Or are the house, or cars getting the option.
Or, initially, we could make a motion that we would approve it without the variance, and without the triplex, just put the duplex into the triplex.
Well, I would not suggest that you make, I mean, the application is what it is. You vote it up or down. We've got that in the plan. We'll vote it up or down. Right now, he wants the triplex, and he wants to draw a 10% exit. He's away with the variance, so that's...
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of confusion. We will withdraw it. At this time, we're gonna resubmit, redraw the plans.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Modi, you accept the withdrawal?
Okay, yes. Can I have a motion to accept the withdrawal? A motion from Modi Gross. Can I have a second? Second from Jordan Rivian. Give me one second. Franny, we have a motion to withdraw the application. Modi Gross and Jordan Rivian, second.
Okay, Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Nafali?
Yes.
Mr. Rivian?
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Okay, good night and good luck. We'll look forward and see any new applications. Okay, moving forward.
4060, Devon Equity?
Devon Equity. And for the record, much like you, it's back on today.
Devon Equity Group, Franklin Boulevard and West Coast Street, Lot 500, Lot 1, R40 Zone. Use variance for retail building. From Terry Gold Engineer Planner, June 21st, 2018. The applicant is seeking a use variance relief to construct a one-story, 20,119-square-foot retail building, prompting access to amenities as illustrated on the variance plan. One bulk variance, one dark setback has been requested.
One what? What was the request? What did you say?
One bulk variance, one dark setback. That's it. That's the only variance requested.
Why? Do you tell us if it's miscellaneous?
No. It's only a use variance.
Besides the use, oh my God.
Chairman, if the board decides to lack favors in your use, our recommendation is not to plant homes until you give a citation.
I was gonna say that.
And we're fine with that. That's fine.
What's your name? Who are you today?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Devon Equity Group LLC. First of all, yes, I will, we are okay with not, the board not voting on the bulk variance relief. We are here this evening seeking use variance approval for use of the subject property, which is located at the corner of Coast Street and Franklin Boulevard, to construct a small, single-story retail shopping center. As the board is likely aware, this neighborhood, that consists of larger R40 lots, has been transformed into a virtual school zone. The property adjacent to this on Franklin Boulevard received approval at the last hearing of the planning board for a boys' elementary school, Ishima Orihuta. The adjacent property on Coast Street is in use as a boys' high school. There are three lots for sale on Newport behind this property that are being marketed to schools, and actually, I just received a contract on them for a boys' elementary school. There is a school right on the other side of Coast Street on Newport, Avenue Sow, a lot that's under contract on Cross across the street from this for a school, and several schools all along Coast Street, including Chayla Torazev, Nishtar Chaya Meir, Shaga Zarye, and Tealas Chayisara, just to name a few. That being said, this area is no longer marketable for large residential lots as it used to be. Nobody is going to build a large residential home sandwiched between schools, not to mention having to put up with all the traffic engendered by the school buses and school traffic. In addition, you listening? In addition, this property is very well-suited for a small retail use, since it's at the intersection of James Street and Coast Streets, and is precisely where all of the traffic from the newly-developed Prospect Triangle lets out. This is a very suitable location for a small grocery store, bagel shop, and/or dry cleaners, such that the people living in the pizza store, so that the people living in the Prospect Triangle do not have to go all the way out to Route 9 and sit in god knows how much traffic just to get a container of milk, or carton of eggs, or a slice of pizza. In addition to bringing a tax ratable to the area, rather than another tax-exempt school property, this project will also help hasten the sewer extension project, which is much needed for all of the schools in this area, and an additional benefit of this project. With that said, I'll turn the floor over to Brian Flannery and ask that he be sworn into the public.
Flannery, you square. We'll firm the draw the whole three to the board. I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I've marked three exhibits. A1 is the plan that was submitted, which shows a step fleet, what would occur here, the upscale building and the parking in front of it, along at the intersection of Franklin Boulevard and Cross, as Mayor indicated. There's a traffic light there. A2 is the sheet one of through the tax map, and I've indicated the zone lines on it. We have the R20 zone that has a school in it. We have the subject property in orange, surrounded by schools. Just to the south, I should have highlighted where Bob Singer used to live. He moved out and the schools moved in. We have the school over here, A1, and R40 where the fairway sits. I think based on what Miriam said, you know what I'm gonna say. You guys should be ready to vote yes right now. But I'll continue if you don't want to stop. So, as Mayor indicated, this is an area that's R40. I lived a couple blocks away from here. I moved out of there because all the schools moved in. And at R40, the value of the property to the schools... What?
And the different applications have a different reason.
Well, it was traffic. It was traffic generated by the schools. Well, it's more than, it's more than just the school buses. It's the kids that could make it onto the school bus, and it's the whole thing. It's the traffic. And the schools in that area actually make more traffic than if it was single-family homes. A good friend of mine, Shmuelik Rabinowitz, said he would have come here and talked in favor of it, but he's stuck in traffic because his kids go to the school. He called me from traffic earlier. So, this shows the subject property is a wooded area. It's been woods there for a long time. Sam Plantzam built his house down the end of Franklin many years ago. Nobody else has built in the area. And we're here to do something that makes sense. It makes sense because retail is something that would be helpful there, so people don't have to drive all over town to get to a retail. There's no retail in that area. I know that well because I lived there. You know, there was nowhere to go. It's something that the peak traffic will be offset, and we have a traffic engineer who can go through his analysis of the site. So, the traffic is offset from what the schools would be. Right now, that area, anybody knows you avoid that area whenever the schools are starting or stopping. You cannot go down Coast Street. And putting another school there is just gonna make it worse. So, it's a very simple application. We're here for a use variance. It's a bifurcated application. We want to use for a business use. There's gonna be no basements rented, no addics rented, no kids going to school. It's gonna be a ratable for the town, and it's gonna provide a needed service. Looking at Terry's report, he says we should give information regarding adjoining development. I think with the Google map showing that it's pretty, you can see the one, you can see the schools, you can see the development in that area. It was an area that was developing with single-family homes. I think Senator Singer generated that. When he moved in, the roads got paved and things were good. When he moved out, the schools moved in and the traffic was hard. Looking at justification for why this should be done. For a use variance, you show it's an inherently beneficial use. You show you have an extreme hardship. When you show that it's particularly well-suited, it promotes the general welfare. My testimony, that site is particularly well-suited. This would promote the general welfare. Looking at the master plan of 2017 on page 7, the vision statement says encourage growth and development in appropriate locations consistent with established land use. That's a property that's sat there for a long time. The only other person that's gonna buy that now is the school. When I first started talking about schools in this area, people told me, "Don't threaten us." It's not a threat, it's a reality. And there are too many schools there. The schools are not on public sewer. They need to be on public sewer badly. Having a site here will help bring the sewer to the area. The sewer is not that far off away on James Street. It was brought up to Drake Road. So, we need to get from Drake Road to Coast Street. This will help accomplish it. The municipal land use law, NJ840155D2, under the purpose of the Act, encourages flash to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estates, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does that. To provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. And it's my testimony that this does that. If the board acts favorably on this use, the applicant will certainly come back with a plan that shows you that the drainage works, that the parking works, that the circulation works. We're at a corner of a major collector road that has a traffic light. That's the best place for a use of this site.
You hear what I have to say?
Do I understand why you're gonna be watering sewer in this study?
Yes. This site cannot be developed without public watering.
Before we continue, I just have a legal question. I want to turn to Terry and Jerry. Both of you, we have the master plan in place that says that no approvals or no, should be given on that corridor, on the building, Cross Road. Cross Street is fixed.
Just if I can correct you, Jim, that's not what it's...
Wait, wait, let me finish my statement. Is it only what the map that was created during the master plan hearing, which is a top-tier township, that that shouldn't go into effect until Cross Street is fixed? Because we created two maps, remember? One currently, and one which will go into effect after Cross Street is fixed, right? Now, in the master plan, there was no discussion of retail. So, that whole area was not discussed retail. It was only broken down into, from R40s to R10s, R12s, whatever was done. But that can't go into effect until Cross Street is fixed. And then that takes effect. So, does that also apply to something like this? Or this has nothing to do with that?
Well, first of all, it's the master plan, which is not, although it's part of the plan, and it's bold and intensive. It's soundsoval. So, it's soundsoval. So, you don't have to bound by it. I mean, it's a good set of goals, I think.
Okay. I just wanted to, just to make sure. I thought so, but I just wanted to bring it open and make sure that what I'm thinking about is correct. What?
The language, you have to have a question. It's a discussion of the application, not a recording.
Question to, I guess, to Terry. I see that, look at this, it says here that it's for warehouse and the office, for retail office. It says for retail and office, but I see here that there's retail, warehouse, and office.
Where's the office? That's the office.
Upstairs.
Oh, upstairs.
So, then, what is the...
Okay, so, on page, this place is Z1, it shows that there is...
The architectural, right. It's showing retail, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then retail place in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 warehouses. And then, second, of course, it's not finished yet, but it's all upstairs, 1 and 2. I'm sure what, how that's gonna fall into place, but... So, my question is... Yeah, I know, it's gonna be retail.
It's gonna be one retail, but this will...
Is this where... So, first of all, before I get to ask Brian your questions, what's the parking for retail? What's the parking for warehouse? What's the parking for office? So, I can get this, try to figure out.
Can I just clarify one thing? It's not warehouse space. It's storage for the stores, and also, those plans are conceptual in nature.
Okay, so it's all retail. Ground floor is all retail.
The ground floor is all retail.
I'm gonna go back. Here's what I said in the beginning of the application. We're not...
We're not going to this site.
So, but it's very hard for us to figure out if we should make this a use variance without knowing what the plan is. Is it retail warehouse? Is it retail office? What are we doing over here? Besides, besides, let me finish something.
Is it one floor? Is it one floor or two floors?
I know. I said it was one floor, but I think it's two. It's two. It's my mistake. It's two. The review letter said one, which is where I took it wrong. But the plan showed two. The archi, no, no, that said one, which is where the review letter and I got that. But the architectural show a second story for office, but again, this is conceptual.
Wait, no, 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 that doesn't work.
No.
Is it one floor or two floors? I think the board has a right to know. We asked for a use variance.
We're asking... We're asking for two. We're asking for two, but again, we're here for guidance from the board as well. This is the use variance only, and if the board says one, we're... This is the use variance only, and if the board says one, we'll, we'll take the guidance.
Okay, let me tell you-
But we're asking-
My guidance. I have a follow-up question, Jerry.
Yes, go ahead.
If I look at, there's a bulk requirements table on the variance plan. Are those requirements as stipulated consistent with architectural plans?
What's the foot plan?
Woman, woman, wait, wait, wait.
I'm answering that question and then hold it.
Wait.
Addressing us.
You have part calculations that are on the variance plan. Is that consistent with the architecture? That, that is, uh, that is based on the architectural plan just. I, I didn't check them because this is only conceptual, but we're, we're showing, and, and again, it's called out as warehouse, it needs storage for the store.
Well, I think the board has to know what type of use you want, because they might look at something differently if it's a retail use or it's a warehouse.
It's retail.
It's, it's not warehouse. The architectural, the architectural plan labels warehouse. It should have been, it was mislabeled. It should say storage. It's mislabeled.
Right, right. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Jerry's thought that when you looked at this, we have over here, um, warehouse area, and your parking is based on retail area, eleven thousand, but office area is seventeen thousand, then you have another seven, seven thousand square feet of warehouse area. So again, you can tell me it's bulk, you can tell me it's conceptual, but what are we doing here? You know what I'm saying?
What we'd like to do is retail, and the retailer's gonna have a back room that's gonna be for storage, and on the second floor, we'd like to do office. And if the board thinks that's too much for the site, which I, I think you'd be better equipped to see if it's too much for the site, if you act favorably on the use. If you, if you're thinking that this site, the use makes sense, but you don't know how much makes sense, will we come back?
A beautiful two thousand square foot kiosk is beautiful on this site. It makes sense. How about that? You know what I'm saying? We need some guidance on what you wanna do. What do you want me to tell you? I, I, I'll tell, I'll tell you what my personal opinion is. My personal opinion is that since this is right next to the M1 zone, which is only one block over, how do you retail loans in the first place? Because you're not that far. Yes, you, you could put in retail in a residential neighborhood, small little shops, grocery store, a little, a little, um, I would call it a little vodega store, but don't even word vodega, it's a long word, it comes out of our mind. Um, as we say, spoken Hebrew, makoleh. Or a small pizza shop, a pharmacy, a cleaners, but not a twenty thousand square foot building, which is right next to, which is right next to M1 zone, um, which, which you could put the stores in right on Eagle Ridge, which is gonna be coming up right down the road. So if this would be deep into some residential neighborhood, and you wanna keep the traffic from getting off, and everyone should be able to walk in the neighborhood to get whatever they need, so therefore the neighborhood can have a walking distance, a small little retail shop, a little cleaner, a little pharmacy, a little pizza shop, a, a little makoleh, that's a different story. Here we're looking at right next door, so just go two hundred feet, three hundred feet, and put it right where it belongs. That's my personal opinion on it.
Retail's not permitted in the M1 zone.
I, it's, but it's still better in an M1 zone, which that M1 zone on Cross Street is not M1 anymore, which is kind of dead. Um, you can do whatever you want, especially in the front of the Eagle Ridge, um, area, with J's buses or right next to the tracks. You could put a beautiful retail shop, and send it, believe me, I will not have any objection. Besides, when you have all this traffic gonna be coming in to this type of store on Cross Street, where are you gonna move? How's all this cars gonna move? You see what's going on in James Street? You see what's going on on aisle nine? You're gonna take all these warehouses and all these parking spaces, to all these, um, carways, turn them into parking spaces? You want it to move in and out?
And it's gonna be better with a school there?
A school, I have no choice. It's, it's right, as it's right. I can't do anything about it.
But it's not even gonna be better, it's gonna be worse.
I, I, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a choice. You know, you're right near the front, and a beautiful office building. Come in the morning, you go in the afternoon, so you gotta fight that a little bit, and you're done. When you, when you, when you have to get a grocery store in here, when it's a shop or a dump, or middle of the day, or whatever, it's crazy. We've noticed, we've seen this on heavy road traffic. And we went through this once before with, with their, with their retail store.
I think part of the problem is that your variance plan talks about a one-story building with about twenty thousand square feet. Your architectural talks about thirty thousand square feet.
My plan says forty thousand.
Forty thousand. Forty thousand.
All right. Can I get my opinion on here? Not that anybody's asking for it, I'm gonna give it anyway. I'll be honest with you guys, I don't have a problem with, uh, with, with putting in retail in this area. I have a problem with the plan and, and the setup, uh, with the size, and, and to echo what the chairman said about a certain place on Route 9, uh, that is a total disaster waiting to happen. I would like to see a, something that makes sense. Small stores, I prefer over one big store supermarket. Um, and parking has to be more than-
And the entrance and exit places.
And entrances and exits.
It has to be happy side foot to work.
Entrances and exits. It's, I, in my calculation, you'd look like you're about fifty, uh, fifty parking spaces off. Um, it says forty thousand square feet on my plan. Do a simple math, divide it by, uh, two hundred square feet per thousand, right? That's two hundred parking spaces. And it's obviously gonna be a, a, uh, a, uh, some sort of makoleh, as, as the chairman calls it.
If this is not gonna happen- It's gonna be one big store.
If it's one big store, then I would be against this project.
Makoleh is a small grocery store.
A small grocery store, but those small grocery stores take up, uh, is more than medical, put it that way. They need a lot more space, you know?
I think, I personally think an office building would fit right in here. It's, it's gonna reduce the traffic, reduce the truck coming in, the delivery truck, the delivery van's going out. It's gonna reduce a lot of that traffic. Put in a nice office building right in here, it'll be perfect for the site. Right in the corner, put in a twenty thousand square foot non-medical, regular office building, just like across the street. I have no problem with that. That's, we might, going to hear my recommendation, my guidance, office building right in there.
Uh, I would be okay with ratables. Anything ratables?
Office building is a ratable.
Anything ratables, better ratable.
That'll be, that'll be, that'll be my, my, my opinion. Yes, you're right. You're right. These mics, by the way, uh, Jerry, these mics are very, very, very sensitive.
Brian, if I can ask you-
Is it working?
The park, it's pretty close to Cross. Now, as the chairman said before, that there, the plan is to widen Cross Street. Did you accommodate that as part of the design? Well, this is a sketch. If the board acts favorably, we'll go to, to the county, see what, uh, what, why you need to propose, and then we'll decide. And you would need county approval before you anyways come back to, to us if we, uh- Well, normally when we go across, we meet with the county, we find out what they're going to approve. Because until you actually get the, uh, county approval, sometimes you can go when you don't have any right here, but then you get it again right here. Uh, but we, we at least meet with them so we know what's approved, uh, and then we, we go to the board that's built. How much you guys-
Okay.
Pull it and come back with, you know, something a little bit more accurate with parking, with the layout, with architectural, something like that. If you need more, you know, just-
I, I would have to see an office building in this corner, to be honest with you. I would say-
What? If you're gonna do office building, I don't have a problem with office building. If you can do retail, I need, I need a better, I need a better picture of what the plan is.
Right off the bat, it's not a park.
It's fine.
Nothing is-
And by the way, I don't trust grocery stores, I don't trust retail stores. You've seen it happen, it's happened all over the place. If you don't give them enough, why park them no matter how? They're gonna make it.
It'll, they will then utilize it, you know? They will utilize- Forget about it, go to aisle nine. They take away the pieces, spaces, they can, they, aisle nine, on aisle nine, they utilize parking spaces for shelf space. Come on. Not that. We did not approve that there. We did not approve that. No. Go ahead. Jerry, go ahead.
No, I think the applicant has something to say.
Oh.
The, the point of this application was that it's a bifurcated application, we really were just seeking approval on the use. The applicant did not wanna go-
For what use was wanted?
Retail, retail on the, on the downstairs floor and office on the second story.
And, and that's what, forty thousand feet?
We, we need to specify a size.
Okay.
But, but in order to start, Jerry, just, just hear me out. The applicant is not gonna go ahead and expend expensive money on designing plans if we don't even know if the use variance is gonna be approved. That's the reason to bifurcate an application, to come before this board and ask for the use to be approved with the board's guidance. We hear me out. With the board's guidance as to the size of the building should be-
We're not engineers. We don't guide. My guide is to put an office, my, my guide is to put an office-
Okay, but the applicant's not gonna put an office building there. Because it's gonna be more worthwhile to put a school there. So an office building's not in the line.
Okay, so?
Come back, you don't have to come back engineering, come back with better parking.
Again.
Carways, ride ways.
But all of that is going to be designed, and this requires county, this requires county approval, so clearly we're gonna go-
Fine, I'll tell you what I did in previous application. We're gonna put a motion, either to, either to up or down, or a motion to, 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 to withdraw. Whatever you want. That's it. You know what you're gonna go, by the way, I need open to the public. Any of the public wanna be heard on appeal number four zero six zero? Devani Equities, seeing none, we're closed to the public.
I just wanted to, the chair.
Yes.
I think if they, if the applicant wanted guidance, the guidance is very clear.
Yes.
I think if they, if they, if they come back, I, I would not have a problem with that.
The applicant would like to come back.
Guidance is, is, you know, most of, most of the-
We, we got guidance.
Okay, so then, so then-
We would like to come back. We will flesh out, we'll flesh out the plans and we will come back.
Can I have a motion? So you withdrawing? Exactly. What?
Could we, can we make a motion to carry it and come back with new plans?
Accurate, yes.
With accurate, there's no reason to draw.
What? Wait, 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 Jerry, Jerry wants to say something. Yes.
Can I just, can I just make one point? With drawing it, withdrawing it requires paying all new fees, all new application fees, all new filing fees, when all we're really doing is fleshing out the plan based on the same use. If we can carry it, we have no problem providing new notice, but that's the reason we're asking for it to be carried rather than to be new application. I also think you can ask Brian, but I think it's a pain in the neck for Brian, to withdraw it. Can't close out the application, you gotta file all new application with new application number, new filing fees, new estros, new everything, when really it's the same application.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't-
Okay.
Brian, how much of a fee is it?
I, I think it's irrelevant, how much it is.
It's thousands of dollars for no reason.
Under $20,000 or over $10,000?
A few thousand.
One second, one second, one second. Julian wants to say something.
To Jerry, I wanna justice to Jerry. You know, I, I don't have a problem with this carrying. Uh, I, I would prefer to see it withdrawn, I think that's the proper way to do this. However, what I, the comment I'd like to make is that I, I think there has to be some kind of rule in place. This is the second application here tonight. And, and, well, here's what's happening. This, this application came and heard it, made all the same recommendations, same type of stuff they said, we're, we're, we're not, we're not happy with it. And, okay, let's hear it from the public. No public, okay, motion. Whoa, wait, we're not ready for motion now, let's see what we can do, my client, but I, I just think it's, it's just a jerking us around. I think at some point, there has to be that heading. You know, if, if it's open to the public and it's ready for a vote, it gets voted. You know, if you wanna pull it before it goes to that point, you know, our comments have been made, you wanna hear it from the public, now there's no public here. It's just, I think at some point, Mr. Chairman-
I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. Therefore, well, we're gonna ask, and ask for a motion, you decide whatever the motion should be, either for a vote or for, or for, or for going and, uh, withdrawing.
I wanna make a point.
Whatever the motion should be.
Last month, last month, we were willing to, quote unquote, punish somebody up to around $10,000, um, because they made a mistake on where they put the air conditioning, because we were sick and tired of mistakes. Now, I understand, and that being said, I understand where you're coming from over here. You thought this one, this one made total sense, and, and you didn't, you didn't really hear that there would be a problem, there would be any pushback over here, until we started saying things that started giving you pushback. But then again, I hear where Mr. Vivias coming from, and he's, his point is that then when you see that we're giving you a flag and we told you exactly what it is, at that point, you should have sat up and said, you know what, I see I'm having problems here, let's sit down. Now that you're, we're at the motion point, I, I think we, we need to have, we need to have some sort of peace. And like Jerry pointed out, it's, it's gonna be almost two months till the next time around. So I think we're well within our rights of using this, even though, it, it, even though it's, you know, it costs money, and I don't want Brian to have more work. And coming up with, coming up with random numbers is probably very hard for, but, you know, the application of this. But again, the point I think that we're trying to make over here is that, enough is enough.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion, but I, I respectfully disagree. I, I'm sorry, and I think it was the last, last time also. I think they waited until the point in which they heard what it is. It hasn't slept so much, and I think what we're giving them is guidance on the exact same application. There's no reason to pay for exactly the same thing. They have the guidance, they're ready to do it. I would be ready to make a motion just for them to come back without even being surprised.
I would, I would, oh yeah.
Okay, we go, we're not go through, we're writing the application.
Motion to carry to August 27th.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. So can I have a motion? Somebody has to give me a motion. This is a motion, not a-
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to, to carry to August 2nd.
Okay, so I have a motion, I'd like to carry it, and-
The new plans, revised plans.
Yes, and can I have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
I would second the motion likely, Madam Secretary.
They could be able to go to get what we need from the county by the next meeting?
No.
We don't have, we don't have to get county approval.
No. I would like to see what county says about widening of that road and how it's going to the property and, and have all that, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to carry it to August twenty seventh, the revised plan submitted on time. Mr. Halverson?
No.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Vivias?
Yes.
Mr. Inberg?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Okay, can I, can I see back there over twenty seven? All right, uh, we're going to take a ten minute break, when we come back, we're going to take appeal number four zero two seven, B Drake Development, thank you. Hello.
I thought we were going to be in there. Okay, what's going on? I'm telling you, you get a chance to take rateable payment because.
You're right.
We sign up that. Anyway. Township, we should purchase a house for them, I'm like. This is, this is like recorded years.
This is my, my name is Tom Girri.
Oh, it's Tom Girri. Anybody there has a kid, you know, they're paying a hundred grand a year for the next sixteen years, you know what I mean? Any kid in special needs, you should, the township should buy a house. They're moving from all over the United States to live in Lincoln.
That's why, that's why it's growing, that's the movement that's growing, the United States is growing.
I thought we were going to be into that thing.
I thought we had a way.
We're going to be in the whole. Hey, you know what, we should have a word tracker. He's only. After a thousand words, we both.
Come on, that's it, time's up. Make, 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 vote.
Vote.
Yeah, once you're past it, this is making good, this is taking too long to sell.
If you can't sell it, if you don't, if you don't sell it, hello, yes, that's it, you know.
First time I ever had to talk about it, I became a branch administrator, so they, this is always kind of, and we got a, and we had a, a trail of branch, we're trying to come to sell this, so I didn't, so like, we get a notice, we have my, so Frank, this goes, I get the double going, and they said to, I'm standing there and the guy, and the guy says, says, well, we see you have a temporary, uh, for this, rash, and, uh, it's quiet and we were. I'm standing there looking up, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going, and I'm thinking to myself, I'm going to go back Monday morning to tell the board, they told our branch. I'm going, uh, Frank, and fortunately, there was a guy on the board, we exec, they called Frank, and they could tell that I was in shock, you know, and he said, I think we ought to give them, uh, another year's construction, so it was really good to me, but, oh, God, you know.
That's why he's a funny thing, one guy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chipping around.
Yeah, but I was, you know, and I'm.
I knew we totally.
Yeah. Honestly, I, you know, those guys, I was just watching, and I'm going to go with it, by the way. They told our branch, hey, for all the money. Well, that was funny. It wasn't, it was funny, yeah, I think it was funny. Yeah, I know.
Um.
Doing everybody a favor.
I need a copy right now.
Right now?
Something just, yeah, something just came up in a second. You have five members now. It's up to you. It's up to you, it's up to you, came up.
State judge in Corin.
Uh, Natale had to run, he had an emergency, he's got, Abram Natale just had to run, something just came up that he had to run, he got a call, he has to run with this elderly father. Um, and Morty Gross has to prove himself, so we're down to five members on, on this application. What do you want to do?
Well, we only, we only need a car, so.
That's fine. I know, I know you expect I want to vote for it.
That's good.
I know.
Oh, that's good. Yes.
What was that, son? Do you realize?
Do you realize that after a certain? You know, I, at a certain point in the presentation, when it goes over this line, I feel it's a no. They've worked it too hard to sell it, it has to be a no. So, you should, I'm going to start timing, you know, I'm going to go.
That's right.
You're over the line.
You've got a clock, bring it with you.
Yeah, you're over the line.
See, like, then we're going to be asking, because when I did quit applications, then I could carry my state work.
I, I, I sure.
These applications must have great.
They were all perfect.
Could have stopped talking about.
Oh, that was funny.
We're going to vote? Are we going to vote?
Let's go.
Okay.
So excited about tonight's application, if I'm coming back.
The more things change.
I think so, yeah.
Route four traffic in nineteen hundred was awful in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, I saw that, yes.
So, I was like, what are we arguing about?
Yeah, yeah. Force and bug it, huh? Jerry, how, how long have you been in Lee's Township?
Lacey?
Yeah.
Oh, did I live there?
Yeah. We, we moved on, but my wife started there in sixty nine, teaching. Yeah, I used to come right up one night, you know, and all these years, everything was, you know, I got mine, that's enough, you know, every township needs to go to, oh, we got to listen, no, and we want to cut it back, and then the rhetoric never changes, it doesn't work, it never changes.
You're right.
Yeah, I can remember.
Want to see him come in?
Yeah. That was good. I want to touch the gavel, baby.
All right, all right, I'm here. Somebody touched my gavel, out there. Somebody touched my gavel.
We are drawing, huh? He said, the way he says that, I think he should be censored. Somebody touched my gavel.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
You can hold on to your gavel.
Don't blame anybody else's gavel.
That's it, all right. All right.
We're shrinking.
We're shrinking.
Taking us off.
Not only left, maybe. Something came up.
Okay. Moving forward, we're going to move into appeal number four zero two seven, B Drake Development. Before we begin the application, I just want to make a note that Abram Natale had to leave, something happened, and he had to go for tonight, and Morty Gross has got to prove himself for this application, so he's down to five applica, he's down to five. No, we have one more, one after this. Uh, yes, he's going to be here for five, yes.
My question was to let your sticks around for the video.
With the video?
A class or something.
Oh, okay, oh, for the class.
Oh.
Yes. Yes.
Not an hour a week.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, uh, five weeks, I have to go again, this is, uh, for, for the application, and I'll, I'll on the record.
Please, what do you?
West Cross Street block two fifty one point oh two, lot ninety eight point oh four and ninety eight point oh five are forty zone, they just subdivision to create twenty two single family residential lots, Ontario vote engineer plan is due fourth twenty eighteen. Under resolution number forty twenty seven, the advocate received bifurcated use and density variance related to construct up to twenty nine single family homes within the R forty single family residential zone. The resolution indicates a maximum density of two point seven square miles per acre was approved, for the advocates professional to total number of units including projects forty twenty seven A and forty twenty seven B will be twenty nine units in conformance with the appeal of twenty seven, forty twenty seven approval.
Good, Mr. Chairman, Adam Peppert, I'm the applicant, I'm sure the board, uh, some of the members of this application, uh, we have previously received our use variance for this application, uh, they kicked back, they received the site plan, we're unfortunate of it, uh, this is all completely the balance of the application. This section, the board was very, this is the section that I wanted to see, this is to create the opening on West Cross Street, that then come through, uh, to Drake Road. Um, we previously had calculated that approved these seven lots, um, some, uh, site plan, and now we're coming back for the board for the balance of it, which is the twenty two, uh, which would make a total of twenty nine units, uh, which is the maximum we can afford, uh, for the lap.
I do, Frank Flanry Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have, uh, five exhibits, eighty one is the map that was approved last night, showing the nine lots, two of them are being re-subdivided, so there's only seven remaining lots from the original. Uh, eighty two is the, uh, map, fact hide that I showed last night, which the orange is what was already approved, and the, uh, lot ninety, along with two lots that were already approved, that were prepared for this evening. Eighty three is the map that shows all of them, uh, and that numbered in blue is seven, uh, lots that were already approved, twenty two is this, so we come with twenty nine. I know all the court members tell me well enough that, that if I tell them twenty nine to twenty nine, it was a debate, it was a housing advocate, so we don't want to see the next one, it's twenty nine, of course, we get it. Uh, and, uh, eighty four is the area that was presented, it shows the property where the prior ones was the, the.
I know, just, maybe you can bend that, uh, yeah, but.
Hang it up, hang it up.
You, you just.
There's no room.
That's it, okay, now, now, did you mark these exhibits, eight?
Yeah, one, two, three, five.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five.
I'm missing one, I only have.
The five is the area.
Okay, okay.
Oh, forward area.
Eighty four is the area, eighty five is the final flat that was submitted on this application, showing the, uh, twenty two, uh, final lot. Uh, it, it, it has connection out to Fourth Street, and as you can see, I mean, three, it's up from Drake Road, right to Fourth Street, we've done it with, uh, cul-de-sac, so it's not a straight cut.
That's four.
And then, eight five is the final flat, uh, she bought, dated, three dollars.
Uh, so, a, as indicated, we were, uh, got approval for two point seven, four dwelling units per acre, maximum twenty nine, that's what we're here to finish this evening. Uh, one of the conditions was the sewer, and this applicant has shown on the plan to bring in the, uh, sewer from Serenity Way up Drake Road, uh, to the first stage was completed, the sewer will be drawn too deep at this point, in order to extend sewer all the way out to West Cross Street or Ninety, so that it will provide a sewer opportunity in the area. So, I think the schools in the area that started out on Suffolk, and they're getting close to that hundred eighty pit, sewer will be available so that they can.
Sewer, it's like, the sewer's coming from Serenity?
Yes.
From the back of Serenity?
Well, or the.
Coming up Drake.
Uh, in Drake Road.
Coming up Drake. Oh, that's to the permanent right now, goes into, that's it, that's it, goes to Serenity? So, you're going to run the. So you're going to run the sewer all the way up Drake?
Yes.
And then?
That's why you gave us the use variance.
Correct. To develop the use variance.
That's why we got the use variance, because of the good things that the...
So the famous Flannery State, and that happened to that...
Well, the Flannery State had sewer because of the underside.
Oh, the underside, I thought it was up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Terry's report, one, it indicates we're here for the 29 units per appeal Number 40.7. Item two indicates the variance relief that we're requesting, and we're asking de minimis relief on lot width for the cul-de-sac lots. And it's kind of typical where you have a cul-de-sac, you measure the width at the front step back, you can see all the lots, fit, beautiful homes, we have them, 14,000, 13,000, 14,000, far exceeding the 12,000 with the fix that we discussed when we did it. But the only relief that we're asking for is for the wet-sunny cul-de-sac lots.
Well, Brian, this is a bit of a real... We have eighty-nine.44, we're here to our...
Well, the relief that we're asking is from eighty-eighty-nine, a lot of the lots exceed the 90 feet substantially. Any of the lots on the straightaway all exceed the 90 feet. And you can see from the plan that they're, it's going to be beautiful...
Well, there's six lots on the cul-de-sac.
I don't see any...
How many lots on the cul-de-sac? How many variants? I mean, how many blocks, the ones with variant?
Well, that's down five, two, five.
There's seven, there's seven lots, right, blue.
And are they all on variants? Or all on cul-de-sac?
Yes, they're all on the cul-de-sac.
And is the reason for the width, it's simply because they're unnecessarily tall?
They're divergent, yeah.
Where's that, I don't think, thirty down to the number two, cul-de-sac lot.
So the lots, I have sufficient width at the, where the house...
Where the house is, yeah. Yeah, they all accommodate a beautiful custom...
From the street, they will all look the same.
Yes, yes. And you can see that on eighty-five. Eighty-five shows boxes, we're not building for those boxes, but those will all be custom homes.
Now, are you, are these any custom homes, below, will they, according to spec, each individual buyer, or this can be like pre-designed of three or four models?
It's intended that it would be pre-sold to individual clients.
And they were going to build however, whatever they want?
Yes, fitting within the configuration.
Yeah.
On page four, Terry indicates two variances that he indicates appear needed. And the reason it appears needs, because we showed a box, and his office was very diligent in measuring the width in the box, and saying it's bigger, and we're off by loads. We're not asking for a combined side yard step back, variance on lot 90.06, we will comply with the combined side yard step back. We're not asking for, we don't need it, the same thing on lot 90.20 for the rear yard step back to the deck, we're not asking for that, we don't need it. All of these lots are large enough to accommodate beautiful homes that people want to build on these custom lots.
On your variance map, I don't see any variance in direction quote. I don't see any variance on your variance map, is that correct?
We identified that based on what was shown.
I should have, but not, I don't see the, on your variance map, I don't see asterisks on the variance map.
Oh, you got the subdivision plan from the submitted width?
Yeah, right over there, hold on.
There's a site development plan, there's sheet four.
There's sheet four.
On the big plan? Sheet three, forty-four, on the engineering plan.
I don't see anything.
But I could identify on this one.
Sheet five?
I have, it may be on, I have it.
Okay, and there's no, there's no variance required, or are you asking any asterisks here?
Well, they have, they have asterisk on lot west, if you look at the bulk of the carpet table.
I'm looking at it.
The other...
There's the file dot flat, which is the document that is delivered to the county, that's all the lots that had there.
I don't see any asterisks here either.
Where are your plans made on?
January 2nd, 18. Y 29, 18. January 22nd.
You have plans that are like two months...
Yeah.
...over, this is new, new plans are all dated, marginated.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Final...
Okay, can I see that then? Thank you.
This is day one, twenty-seven.
What?
You'll finish your day at twenty-seven?
No, January 1st, January 2nd. Okay, I got this, this is good. January 2nd.
January 2nd.
Okay, so now, now, just making, I'm going to go back. Eighty-nine, eighty-four, that's where those other cul-de-sacs?
The ones with cul-de-sac are ninety, one oh one, oh two, oh five.
What is it, ninety? Ninety? Okay.
Eighty-one, oh two, oh five, oh nine.
Oh nine.
Seventeen.
Okay.
Eighteen, and nineteen.
Seventeen, yeah, that's back there. What's the, what's the curve, what's the, what's the frontage of the, of the curve?
The old lot width.
What's the lot, yeah, what's the lot, what's the lot width at the curve? What's the lot width over here at this curve, the curve?
I'd have to look at the...
Is that the eighty-four?
No, no, the eighty-four is at the front step back lot.
Which is where?
The lot width is measured at this front step back.
Is right at the front step back?
That's where the eighty-four is, yes.
Got it, so that's where you meet the...
Yes, if you, if you look at an average lot width, it would be much bigger than that, and the house fits.
I understand that. That's why you have the four cars put together.
Yep. In reality, somebody would probably do a garage and a driveway, and suit the car, and the house would be pushed back, there's a lot of options.
Okay, that's what I'd like to see, I don't like this, such as, I don't want to see more lots, you know? Okay? Okay, go ahead. Everyone okay with it? Tom, everyone all right? Okay.
What should they dispute that?
What's that question for?
Oh, the driveways? Certainly, something, you shouldn't have four, four cars right where you're coming.
They're going to be custom homes, people are going to be paying for these houses, they're not going to do four.
That's what it is, is it going to be, is it because the bill goes, is it going to be, or is it going, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. You might have a side entry garage, it's...
Yeah, correct, okay.
Yeah. So, again, the two variances listed on page four, we're not asking for, they're not required. Other comments in Terry's report with respect to the sanitary sewer, again, that will be available to the surrounding area, it'll be available to all the properties on Drake Road and to the, and will be available to anybody out on Cross Street as well. It will be available because this is what we keep on Drake, to be extended further on Drake, in accordance with our agreement, when we got the use, we are providing public sewer to them. The roadways are RSIS compliant.
Skip over Mr. Boyd's constructionist number of beds.
Derek, they're going to be custom homes, so typically, typically custom homes are five or six bedroom homes, they don't have basements.
Are there going to be independent basements for that?
No independent attic, and there would be potential, like everybody in Lakewood, to have a, one rentable unit basement. I would not anticipate in a neighborhood of this nature that that would be the case for a majority of homes, but it is permissible. Yes, they'd have to comply with building code and the, and the Lakewood Order.
Are you, are there one or two basement?
We don't have, well, there's lots...
Yeah. So, obviously, the trash, it's intended to be picked up by Public Works, we need Public Works approval for that, Public Works did approve the first nine lots, and we would anticipate they would do this, if Public Works doesn't approve it, it'll be private pickup. Item 27, with regard to the screened trash enclosures, we're not doing screened trash enclosures, people are going to put their trash in the backyard, the same way all the single-family homes in Lakewood do. Twenty-eight, there is no HOA. On page seven, on the architectials, with respect to the HDACs, none of the HDACs will be in the front yards, here we have plenty of side yard room, so they'll either be in the side yards or the rear yards, same as all the other single-family homes in Lakewood. And with respect to the traffic, as we testified at the use application, this will actually be advantageous, the traffic in that it makes a, makes a connection between that dead curve and Drake Road, where my dog had to play the car all the way out to Cross Street. So it'll, it'll help the traffic on Drake Road, and it'll, it provides a way, direct access to a county road. And all the other comments in Terry's report, we will satisfy the, his comments.
I just have a couple questions. That curve on Drake Road is a very dangerous curve.
Yes.
What can we do there to...
Well, the, the last time, last time we faced it, the school that we got...
I know, I think we talked about it, I know as well.
Yes, the configuration is that it's a three-way stop. So the people coming here, instead of whipping around that curve and hitting dogs...
And is he going to, is he going to approve the three-way stop?
It's not a DOP issue, it's a...
Pass.
Yes, and there's no reason to pass, we're not approving.
The three-way stop right there?
Yes.
And you're hoping guys are going to whip up Drake Road from change, not noticing it in the...
The whole problem is there, and I knew well, because I looked right down the street, we used to run there all day, right? Is that when the schools came, people are waiting for schools, that's the problem. The cars flying, people...
And they're wearing black, and no one sees anything.
Right, that's right. Once you have residential building, and, and this area will build up, and it's going to have sewer, once you have residential housing, nobody whips through residential neighborhood, it drifts through undeveloped areas or areas where schools are.
Is that road winding, is that Drake winding, is that what I see?
Drake, Drake were winding on our property, we're also winding, we're providing winding on county, Cross Street, towards the county, for two lanes.
For two lanes, for the future?
Yeah.
Okay.
Justification for the variance, Jerry had something to put in the resolution, the master plan of 2017, background information, says, on page three, says it's important to plan for the residential development, growing population. Division statement on page seven says encourage development, growth and development in appropriate locations, it's my testimony that this does this. And the municipal land use law, NJAC 40,55 V2, under the purpose of the act, says, A, to provide for appropriate development in appropriate locations, and we do that, and provide for appropriate population densities, and this is in accordance with the density stipulated by the original plan.
I personally think that this is, at the end of the day, the way the road is configured, I think it came up very nice, be a nice loop for that for the cul-de-sac, and then a nice loop around that internet. I personally don't have a personal problem with it, besides that we just discussed the core, and the same thing on Cross Street, I'm sure you're going to do some traffic control things that people don't whip out on the Cross Street.
Yeah.
Maybe just a right turn or left turn only, or maybe crossing over, I don't know, my fellow members discuss. However, I do have one, one request, that this is in zoning board, stick with what the zoning board likes, even though it's a custom home, so that it acts the, from the side door, and the proper amount of doorways into the basement, which that one or two, one interior on the side, I know it's a custom house, but at least stay within the compact. Area, what? Irrigation system, that has, should look, should look somewhat at least, I know there going to be more than a third block, but at least metal shingles or vinyl siding all around, you know, which should have some type of, for here, that would be what I have to add to this.
And the applicant agrees solely to this.
Okay. One apartment basement to the soul, you're allowed?
Yes.
What else? What? One and a five. One and a five. The door. Anyone else have anything to say? I've gone up to the public, Appeal Number 4027B, Drake Development, anyone who thought it might be heard, seeing none, we're opposed to the public, if anyone has anything else to say, or a motion, did you say something?
I make a motion to approve.
It's all the same vision, Mr. Harbison.
Yes, Terry, thank you. I motion from my side, can I have a second? Second, second, put you to the, to the yet, I checked there, okay.
Mr. Harbison?
Yes.
Phil Anker?
Yes.
St. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Harbison?
Yes. Good night, good luck, enjoy. Judah, moving forward, we're going to go into Sheldon Newman, 4079.
Myrtle Place, lot 75.01, lot 17, RL R12 zone, new single-family home requesting side yard setback variance on Terry vote engineer plan is June 21st, 2018. Advocate is seeking approval to construct a new single-family, two-story home with basement. Advocate's side yard setback variance requested for 20 feet or 25 feet is required. Variance is requested for existing non-conforming sheds.
Well, what's that mean, existing non-conforming shed, the sheds that are there prior?
The sheds that are there, that are not conforming.
But you didn't put them up, they were there before you bought the house? It's good, I'm asking.
I don't know what he's, what the house, I don't know what he said.
Okay. Okay.
And no, they're not, I keep from the property line, because they don't have variance. They don't have...
Okay, well, we're going to find out in a minute.
The line is raised your right hand, you know?
Give your full name for the break.
Line line, professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey. A1? A1 is the variance map, I heard by my office. A2 is the front elevator, has the architect's garden, something for elevator pass. And A3, A4, I couldn't...
I'm sorry, A3?
A3 is, no, A2.
A2 with the four elevation. Wait a minute, I got the... Glenn, A1 is the variance plan.
Yes.
A2 with the four elevations.
Right.
What is A3?
A3 is the first floor plan of the...
Is it just the first floor, Mr. Harbison? I can't hear you, Sergeant.
It's just the first floor, it has the first floor, and the first floor, like... We're here requesting a variance for combined side yard setback to 25 feet. We propose 20, we have the conformant tenant with side yard setback on each side, and we're requesting a variance for the... For the eight-foot, five, five-foot side door. It's on the, looking at the house, it's on the, on the right side of the house. The house is way down, it made sense rather than have an outside porch, they, the avenue wanted to have a closed porch on the side of the house. And we say, the lot, the lots, 90 feet required, and the lots are certified, we want, so they are narrow lots of the variance. This is on 90 foot wide lots, we would expect. With regard to the sheds, which one of the board members questioned, the sheds have been on the lot for quite a while, with the existing home, we're tearing down the existing house, keeping the sheds, and shown on the variance plan, and keeping the existing pool. So, those sheds have been there probably fifteen, twenty years.
How long have the owner been living there?
I don't, I don't know.
Is the owner there? Is the owner there? I'd like to know if the owner has the sheds up himself, or do you, or they want to? Do we have, there's no owner here, there's no attorney, the owner?
I can't hear what you're saying.
There's no owner here, can we represent the owner, if that an owner, or attorney here? So then, I think we should just buzz off and go.
Who's that? The owner's not here.
I'm sorry?
I thought you said, yeah.
I just, Terry, I, Terry. Okay, all right, can I have a motion, Terry, appeal number 4079? I'll make a motion. Motion by, my lady, first, second, Mr. Vivian, matter of second, your role, please.
Sorry, I just, I just, I can hear you.
Mr. Halverson? Mr. Halverson?
Mr. Halverson?
Mr. Langford?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Okay, great. Can I have a motion to pay bills?
We're ready, resolutions, we're ready.
Can I have a motion to the resolutions? I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pay bills?
Motion to pay bills? Motion. Motion. Get Terry's bonus. We can ask, we can ask, Jerry, how do we do this? Can I close the meeting, or can we close the meeting? And I'd like to meet everybody in the back. So, we're going to close tonight's meeting, thank you very much, I hope that I enjoyed the summer, and...
Thank you.
See you back August 27th. Okay? Okay, can anyone go in the back? Thank you very much, Jerry. Happy, happy, oh, okay, well, let them have...